I've never heard it. I've got something that I want to say right here.
You said from your seat, continue.
No, I'm not on the floor up there. That was only in the red tonight. Senator, we're here for seven seconds.
Well, we're listening now.
Those who commented about moving up that...
We've been... And in my way, we're not listening, you know?
I wonder what nobody's listening was, which is a story of my life. So you heard him say that?
Yes, he was.
Judge Knight, he's commenting. He's commenting. He's standing up there somehow. He wants to say that.
You know who said it?
You don't know who said it.
But you don't know who said it.
I'm not sure what to do with you. But I'm sure this gentleman back there in the middle seat has a plan for all of us. I'm not sure what it is. I can't give a campaign speech because none of you live in Ward A. Is it time to start yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and it might be a good time to get in, the TV's rolling.
Make sure you see, see where it says fighting Irish? Zero your camera not that. Not by retirement, just the word fighting Irish. You got it?
Go ahead, straight jacket.
He's not nodding his head. Oh, all right. Very good. All right. Mr. Perry, nice to see you out after dark.
We apologize.
I've been, just been surrounded by sixty-five gorgeous women.
Oh, that's fine.
Sixty-two.
I was in good help, you know, the mayor was there, Mark was there, Gina was there. Deanna showed up late, so she couldn't, he was out of trouble. The mayor wrote down, was there, and she just watched, watched me get in trouble.
I'll say one thing, Jim, you're in rare form tonight.
And as your campaign manager, I suggest you be quiet.
No, listen. Campaign manager, or something I want to talk to you about.
Now, ready? Okay, let's get started. Councilmember, if you'd say, October 2nd, 2008, please come to order. We've asked Council Lady Mayor Protheum Barbara Johnson, please, for prayer. And Councilman Summers, please, in the debate, please rise.
Do you have any follow-up to you back here tonight? Thank you, because many blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank thee, Heavenly Father, for health and strength, sparing us to be here tonight. And we ask thou, Heavenly Father, to be with us as we make decisions for the best of this, for this city. Be with our mayor, these council members, and everyone that's gathered here, and the city as a whole. Be with the men and women on the battlefield, send them safely home to their family loved ones, and those they left behind. These blessings we ask in your powerful, precious name we pray. Amen.
For the good reasons to the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, which is saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Willis?
Present.
Ms. Warren?
Present.
Mr. Wall?
Here.
Mr. Summers? Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Brooks? Mr. Harrison?
Here.
Mr. Swift?
Present.
Mr. Harris?
Present.
Mr. Brad?
Here.
Mr. Forester?
Present.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Would you go into public hearing? Mr. Swift?
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you please reordinate 11, 2008, 2009, and 14, 2008, 2009?
Order 11, 2008, 09. First reading, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the city of Clarksville, application of William M. Huddleston for zone change on property at Greenwood Avenue and Madison Street from R3, two and three family residential district, and R4, multiple family residential district, to R3, H1, two and three family residential district, historic overlay district, and R4, H1, multiple family residential district, historic overlay district. Order 16, 2008, 09, amending the zoning ordinance and map of the, excuse me, and official code relative to demolition in the H1 historic district.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, I'll move we go into public hearing.
Say a name. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Public hearing. Those who speak in favor of ordinance 11, please come forward.
I'm back. I'm Eleanor Williams, Montgomery County historian, here to speak for the overlay. We've lost many, many homes, historic homes, in the past, and we need to protect those that we still have. Now, I'm not going to go through all that I went through last meeting, because you all heard it then. If you did, you can check the record. But I went into the history of the houses. They were connected to prominent people. They are historic. They run from, they show the Clarksville's history through its progress from eighteen hundred into the nineteen hundreds. So these houses are important. They're connected to Cade Johnson, for one thing. They're connected to Judge Tyler, who saved our poor health, and was the father of our livelihoods. So they're, they're important for many, many reasons. They are significant for their style, their architecture, and their association, as I said, with prominent people of Clarksville. As well as those associated with it that are not so prominent, like myself, who walked through the halls of Clarksville High School, now Greenwood Place. So we need to keep these houses, if at all possible. The owners have requested this, and the historical zoning board approved it, and the regional planning commission approved it. So I request that it be considered a use of. Thank you.
Anyone else to speak in favor of ordinance 11? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Don Sharp, and I live in the Emerald Hill Historic District, the last H1 district forming in Clarksville. And I was going to spend a minute talking about the historical merits of the area, but I won't do that, but I, after Eleanor's just talked. But I will say that a number of years ago, as a past president of the Historical Society, while riding through Clarksville with members of the Tennessee Historical Commission, one of the things that struck me was how they were concerned why the city hasn't already declared Greenwood a historic area, thinking it was very meritorious of being that. But I would like to speak to the value of the H1 concept. Keep in mind that when most of these houses were built, zoning did not exist. Building codes did not exist. And actually, subdivisions did not exist when houses were built like this. So as we've gone through time, and, and codes and zoning was developed, and subdivisions were developed, and in subdivisions, covenants were added within the deeds of subdivisions to protect the homeowners from things that might occur that would have a negative effect. And we went through time in the fifties and sixties, deteriorations in the cities, in the cities which, which had nothing except codes to protect them and zoning. Then, it was looked at nationwide that something needed to be done, and that was done in Clarksville, and it was the formation of the concept of H1, which would protect the people who were actually moving into cities. And Clarksville did this. Madison Street was formed, H1. Dog Hill was formed in the nineties. Then, then we had Emerald Hill, as well as some other areas. This H1 concept provides stability, and it protects homeowners so unusual things don't happen. Any of you knew what happened in Wing Gate in the last year, when their, when their covenant ran out, and someone built a metal building in Wing Gate, and it caught the people off guard? That's a tactic thing we don't want happening anywhere in the city. We sure don't want it to happen in the, in the inner city with what we have going on. Our property values have risen. Studies show that property values in H1 areas rise thirty percent faster than a neighborhood that's, that's adjacent to one that is not H1. So H1 is a very valuable asset. I hope you'll consider that the Greenwood people are wanting to do something that's valuable to the city, that's going to be valuable to them, and I hope you'll consider and vote for their H1 request.
Anyone else speak in favor?
Thank you. I'm Marlon Olson. I'm probably a little biased, because I'm two homes in here, and I just can't imagine a part of town where there's, in so few houses, they're all, you know, eighteen fifty to nineteen fifteen houses, and they're, they're all beautiful. They've all been restored, and all we're looking for is, I mean, my request is basically just to keep it like it is. I just, I, I just don't want to see, you know, people do whatever they feel like doing. It's a beautiful part of Clarksville. If you've never driven down there, I wish you could come in some of these houses and see them. They're, they're absolutely gorgeous, and I wish Ms. Powers was here tonight. She was born in her house. I mean, she's ninety-two years, she was born there. And her house is gorgeous, and Sarah Beth Haynes, and all these homes, people have spent a lot of money, and they're proud of them, and it, it's a shame not to, I can't think of a part of Clarksville, I grew up there, and not in a smaller section of town where there's that many pretty old homes, and, you know, helps out. That's it.
Ms. Hudson, thank you, for, I called you, called you, returned, I think we didn't get yet, but I want to tell you, I thank you for remodeling the house there on Greenwood, and doing, doing a great job on that.
That's understatement.
I've been there, done it, so, appreciate your commitment, and it's, it's great, great.
Well, the other people there have done the, yeah, they have. They have.
Anyone else speak in favor of ordinance 11? Please come forward. Those in opposition, ordinance 11, please come forward. Those in favor, ordinance 16, please come forward. Those in opposition, ordinance 16, please come forward.
Mayor, I believe we go back into regular session.
Please. Those in favor, go back to regular session. Please.
Okay, ordinance 11, 2008, 2009, vote with staff and the regional planning commission recommendation is for approval, and I so much.
Second in discussion. I'd like to make a couple points, if I may. I wanted to ask for the postponement of this, and the reason, as most of you know, that I asked for the postponement of this, not because I did not want to establish, say, historic district or historic overlay, is that I wanted to strengthen the historic district and overlay possibilities. I'm, I'm real concerned about properties and historic overlays that are zoned multifamily, R3, R4, and multifamily. When, when these properties become in decay from someone not taking care of them, the next thing that happens is a developer comes in, and because they're zoned for multifamily, they come in and destroy the property. And, and I'm not interested in that. I'm interested in, in maintaining and, and improving our historic overlay. Ms., Harris and I have a meeting next to ten thirty, I believe, next Monday morning, ten thirty, to be able to strengthen this. And I'm, I'm excited about the opportunity and the possibilities of making our historic overlay more than what it is today. I don't want to see any more of our properties demolished because they were not maintained, and because they were sold at low values, and the, and the property values were greater because of the zoning of it. And I intend on working on the zoning to restrict the zoning on historic overlay, so that, so this will not happen any further. We are losing our, our history because of, of people demolishing properties, and that is the reason that, that I delayed this. And, and I intend on pursuing this further and strengthening the historic overlay of our city, along with the, the support of the city council. Any other comments on ordinance 11?
Okay, those in favor, ordinance 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Ordinance 16, 2008, 2009, the historical rewrite committee and the regional planning commission recommendation is for approval. As you all recall, this was changed in the time of ninety days to a hundred and twenty days before demolition could take place or purchase of the property, but recommendation is for approval.
Second. Any discussion on 16? Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 17, 2008, 09, first reading, amending the official code relative to renter service, adoption of minutes, regular session September fourth, and special session September ninth. Approval of board appointments, board of legalization, Mary Cooper, Lee Gelder, October 2008 through April 2010. Housing authority, James Halford, October 2008 through September 2013.
Motion to approve.
Second in discussion, if you can stand it in. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion to approve. Bill, Eleanor, Ms. Harrison.
Mayor, the interim director of Bill, Mr. Les Crocker, wants to address the council about a couple of items.
In front of you, you got two folders placed on your desk for the meeting, nine sixteen Madison Street and two oh two Madison Street. If you open up nine sixteen, that's the old Cade Johnson house that we will have to look at, we have some complaints on. And the first page in that folder is the citation that we issued to Mr. Burman, and the pictures that are numbered number one go along with that first page, and that's how the property looked at the time the citation was issued. If you go to the second page in that, that's the bid and how much it costs to remedy the old road, and pictures number two, show number two go with that page. And that cost was eighteen hundred dollars to clean that up. And where we're at now is, once we cleaned that up, we exposed the house in a lot of rotten wood. The house is in a state of disrepair, and the third page goes with pictures of Martin and the Cleveland. And I'm going to go on to the next one, which is two oh two Madison Street. We just started the process on that one. The pictures show how it exists now, and the page in there is our citation that we issued this week. In dealing with Ms. Thurmond, she has represented, Bobby Dunson, that comes down and sees a SWAT officer on this property, and nothing's ever been done to it every time we've issued a notice of violation. This time, we found beating it out, or getting quotes, and going ahead and having the debris removed when the time comes up. And it's probably going to expose some damaged wood, and some painting, and some repair work. The reason I'm here tonight is because if we do this, we only, we have four means to repair this property, and one is that the owner will do it. In both of these cases, I don't believe the owner's going to do that. So our next case, or our next process would be taking decisions to work and have fines lifted. That's not going to be the answer either, because both of them have fines against them now, and they're not, they're not doing anything. Our next way we can do this is to chance report, the same way that we've done with Rashford, with Scott, with Van Bevere properties. The problem with that is, that is a long process. And so our, our last step would be to go in and repair those ourselves. Bid those out, or have quotes put out to see what the cost of paint, repair the exterior on it, not the interior, just the exterior, to bring them up to a, somewhere they would be suitable. And if we do that, the reason I'm here is, I want to, I want to come back and ask the council for money to repair its properties. I've talked to Mr. Baker today, and, and he's going to investigate to see if we can do that. And if we can, and no, no other action works, I'm going to come back and ask for money to repair it.
There's, the cost of that ends up being a lien against the property.
That's correct.
Which in many cases, the property owners continue to pay their property taxes, but never pay the liens against property for where the city has put taxpayers' money to clean it up.
Can I have a question? In reference to cleanup, are we talking trees and landscaping, or are you talking actually touching exterior property itself, the house itself? Because that's two different things.
On what we've already done?
No, I'm the one you're, the one you're now talking about.
Yes, yes, so we're talking about possibly painting and repairing and replacing exterior wood that's rotting. The problem with the Burman house is, the wood that's rotten, in some of the pictures, has already led to damage to the inside of the house. If we repair the outside, that should keep walking, and it can do damage to the inside.
I'm just curious, from a legal standpoint, just maybe you can help me out? Do the city have the right to just make repairs to someone's property against their wishes, pretty much?
The councilman, that's, that's what he wanted me to look at, and that's what I haven't looked at yet. We just talked about it, and saying, I plan on looking to see if we have, if the city has that kind of power to do it. Okay, it's clear we have the authority to clean up.
Yes, sir.
What Mark's question is, and mine too, is do we have the authority to actually upgrade the property?
Right.
With taxpayer money on private property? Ms. Harrison?
Do these, do these properties fit the guidelines that were established for the redevelopment area? Are they in that area?
One of them. One is.
No. The guideline is being one.
That, that they are abandoned, or are you picking living in them?
No, they're not.
Are there utilities on them, on this one?
On the Hayes farm, is that on the Burman? I'm not sure.
The one we're talking, is the one. You've already cleaned up the Burman property?
That's correct, sir.
And before you make any other moves there, you'll come back to the recommendation to the council, based upon the legal opinion of the attorney, is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so now, so that's that one. So we're on this, the one on the corner of Second and Madison Street. So, so we're talking about doing the same thing on that as you did on the Burman property. The question is whether or not the council wants to commit funds to, to upgrade the property, and whether or not it's legal.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying? And is that your question, too?
That is.
Why don't, unless there's an objection from the council, it looks, it looks like that the exterior cleanup, as far as the yard and all, certainly does not meet the criteria you're close to division, is that right? Trees, shrubs, whatever, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it sounds like that, that you're willing, then you're authority to do that. So move on on that, and then come back, before you're going further, come back and report to the council, the council, the council.
Respect, I'm too bold, and those may first.
It should. Sure, sure.
And the times are up on, until November the second.
November the second, on this, on this property?
Yes, sir.
On Burman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do, I want to ask you, have you already been through this process on these properties, all the properties, as far as notification of the property owner, that they're, that they're outside of, of the code's requirement? Do they, do these property owners know that they're violating the city's statute?
Yes, sir. Just Burman.
Over how many years?
That one's been at least two years, and Haley Burman has been at least two.
And you're just not getting any reply or any response from her?
No.
You mentioned Bobby Mountain, what's the significance, Bobby Mountain?
He shows up and says he represents her, and we have several conversations with him, but nothing ever gets resolved. I think the last thing that he did was build a step on the front of two oh two Madison.
That's this property? Okay. I, I'd like to request, when you get an opinion, there's new representatives, there's no problem someone representing him, I would, I would guess that you should have some designation from the property owner. Would you agree with that, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Something in writing saying that he represents, I mean, I could say, I represent your property, come and get his own without your, without your support. I think we need some kind of documentation on that.
All right, sir.
Something from her stating that he is her representative, and she needs to be aware, that's giving you quite, that's quite a lot of authority.
Yes, sir.
Her or anyone else is going, you've represented someone, you're given the authority to speak on their behalf, or to represent the group.
Let's not look at this, are you saying that it's only going to cost two thousand dollars to get this property left apart?
That's just trim the shrubs.
Oh, okay.
Get the ivy and everything off the side of the house.
What about the house itself?
We don't know. It, it could cost as much as eighty, ten thousand dollars to repair the outside of the Burman.
But what would happen there, once you get the yard cleaned up? What's going to happen with the house?
That's, that's the second notice that we sent out, and we'll wait and see what responses.
Isn't that going to set a precedent for other people throughout the city of Clarksville, that if you put that much money in somebody's house, that somebody else will want it?
Really hasn't had this problem, other than these two.
Yeah. It just doesn't seem fair for them not to take care of their own house.
So far this year, I know we've demolished eighteen homes in the city of Clarksville that had been demolished, and repaired about fifty-two.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Parker?
You mentioned Rashford. What's going on with them?
With Rashford, a order has been issued by the court on the eighth of October. I want to go out to the site and visit it. If nothing has been done, I'll, we'll report back to the court if nothing's been done. Trial will reset, and it's my understanding that if he doesn't comply, that he'll be put in jail, and given the time that he has had to do that.
Thank you, sir. Your opinion on it? Okay, then? Yes, sir. Ms. Parker, if you don't mind, that they'd like to have some cleanup pictures of those on the Burman property. Is it in here, too?
No.
Okay, and then the one on secondary.
After it's cleaned up?
Yes, sir.
And to my word, I'd like your opinion, sir.
Thank you, very much.
That concludes my report, ma'am.
That was a great report, Harrison. Finances administration, Ms. Redd.
Disorder 18, amending the operating budget for the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, amend the Ole Lake Special Advantage, Special Revenue Fund. Funds committee vote for approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, adopting the news media guidelines. The finance committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, adopting the news media guidelines. The finance committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, amending the Ole Lake Special Revenue Fund. Funds committee vote for approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, adopting the news media guidelines. The finance committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Resolution 21, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, amending the Ole Lake Special Revenue Fund. Funds committee vote for approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Special Revenue Fund. Funds committee vote for approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, amending the Ole Lake Special Revenue Fund. Funds committee vote for approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs. The finances committee recommend approval, now move for approval.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed.
Order 19, 08, 09, adopting the Ole Lake Street Department operating budget for done life, planned repairs.
Is the wood that's rotten in some of the pictures has already led to damage to the inside of the house. If we repair the outside, that should keep walking and building with damage to it.
I'm just curious from a legal standpoint, maybe you can help me out. Do the city have the right to just make repairs to someone's property against their wishes, pretty much?
The councilman, that's what he wanted me to look at. That's what I haven't looked at yet. We just talked about it this afternoon. And I plan on looking to see if we have, if the city has that kind of power to do that.
Okay, it's clear we have the authority to clean up.
Yes, sir.
What Mark's question is, and mine too, is do we have the authority to actually upgrade the property?
Right.
With tax care money on property. Ms. Harrison?
Does these, do these properties fit the guidelines that were established for the redevelopment area? Are they in that area?
One of them.
One is.
No.
The guidelines being one.
That they are abandoned or are there people living in them?
No, they're not.
Are there utilities on them, on this one?
On the Hayes farm is out on the Burrows. I'm not sure.
The one we're talking about is the one. You've already cleaned up the Berlin property.
That's correct, sir.
And before you make any other moves there, you'll come back to the recommendation of the council based upon the legal opinion of the attorney. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. So now, so that's that one. So we're on this, that one on the corner of Second and Madison Street. So we're talking about doing the same thing on that as you did on the Berlin property. The question is whether or not the council wants to commit funds to, to upgrade the property and whether or not it's legal.
Yes, sir.
Is that what you're saying? Is that your question, too?
That is.
Why don't, unless there's objections from the council, it looks, it looks like that the exterior cleanup, as far as the yard and all, certainly does not meet the criteria of codes, division, is that right?
Yes.
Trees, shrub, whatever, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And it would sound like that would fit you well, then your authority to do that. So move on on that and then come back, before you're going further, come back and report to the council.
That comes to your calling, because many folks...
It should.
And the time's on, until November the 2nd.
November the 2nd, on this, on this property?
Yes, sir.
On Berlin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I do, I want to ask you, have you already been through this process on these properties, both properties, as far as notification of the property owner, that they're, that they're outside of the codes requirement? Do they, do these property owners know that they're violating the city statute?
Yes, sir. Just Berlin.
Over how many years?
That one's been at least two years and Taylor Berlin has been at least two.
And you're just not getting any reply or any response with her? You mentioned Bobby Mountain. What's the significance of Bobby Mountain?
He shows up and says he represents her. And we have several conversations with him, but nothing ever gets resolved. I think the last thing that he did was build a step on the front of 202 Madison.
That's this property? Okay. I'd like to request, when you get an opinion, there's new representatives who, there's no problem someone representing him, I would guess that you should have some designation from the property owner. Would you agree with that, Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
Something in writing saying that he represents, I mean, I could say, I represent your property coming to get his own without your, without your support. I think we need some kind of documentation on that.
All that's right.
Something from her stating that he is her representative, and she needs to be aware, that's giving you quite, that's quite a lot of authority.
Yes, sir.
Her or anyone else, it's only you're representing someone, you're given the authority to speak on their behalf or to represent the group.
Let's, let's now look at this. Are you saying that it's only going to cost $2,000 to get this property left to park?
That's just trimming the shrubs.
Oh, okay.
Getting, wiping everything off the side of the house.
What about the house itself?
We don't know. It, it could cost as much as $8,000, $10,000 to repair the outside of the Berlin.
But what would happen there, once you get the yard cleaned up, what's going to happen with the house?
That's, that's second notice that we sent out. And we'll wait and see what response is.
Isn't that going to set a precedent for other people throughout the city of Clarksville? That if you put that much money in somebody's house, that somebody else will want it?
Really hasn't had this problem, other than these two.
It just doesn't seem fair for them not to take care of their own house.
So far this year, I know we demolished 18 homes in the city of Clarksville that had demolished and repaired about 52.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Parker?
You mentioned Ransford. What's going on with them?
With Ransford, an order has been issued by the court on the 8th of October. I want to go out to the site and visit it. If nothing has been done, I'll, we'll report back to the court if nothing has been done. Trial will reset. And my understanding is that if he doesn't comply, he'll be put in jail and given the time that he has to handle it.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Okay, then? Yes, sir. Mr. Parker, if you don't mind, they'd like to have some cleanup pictures of those on the Berlin property. Is it in here, too?
I don't know.
Okay, and then the one on Second Street.
After it's cleaned up?
Yes, sir.
It's in my ward, but I'd like your opinion to say...
Thank you very much. That all the town...
That concludes my report.
Well, that's a great report, Harrison. Finance Administration, Ms. Redd?
This ordinance, 1809, the Highway Street Department operating budget for deadline and labor repairs, the Finance Committee recommends approval and I move for approval.
Motion, second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Ordinance 190809, amend the 08 Special Advantage, Special Revenue Fund, Finance Committee vote for approval and I move for approval.
Second, motion, second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
Resolution 210809, adopting the news media guidelines, the Finance Committee recommends approval and I move for approval.
Second, motion, second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you, complete final report, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Redd. You asked for one. No report, ma'am.
No report, ma'am.
Public Safety, Ms. Ward?
It was covered under 700.
Thank you, Ms. Ward. Street Commissioner, Ms. Harrison?
Mayor, I believe you have an announcement.
I do. Received notification, Dave, from the engineer that did the Strawberry Alley, the lead district, that they, that they submitted, they, their engineering firm, submitted the lead district and Strawberry Alley for a, a award. And they notified us this afternoon that we have received notification that the city of Clarksville has won the Tennessee chapter of the American Public Works Association Project of the Year for the state of Tennessee award from the lead district, Strawberry Alley project. Projects, projects were nominated across the state and it's a real honor for our community to win this award. The award, the award will be presented during the TCAPWA Annual Conference at a banquet on Monday, October 13th, in Memphis. I would encourage each of you to attend to accept that award. I'm sorry, my wife and I are planning on being out of town that evening, but it'd be great to have a great contingency from the city council to accept this prestigious award.
Hey!
If you're able to, and we'll, we'll certainly provide transportation there, please notify Brittany or Valerie at the office and she'll, she'll make the necessary travel arrangements so we can all travel together. So that's a great compliment for you and the city of Clarksville. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Harrison?
That concludes my report.
Great report, ma'am.
Transportation Committee, Ms. Johnson?
No report, just standing there.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Okay, other new business? We have the amending of 2008 operating budget for this, and this property's on City Hall roof repairs. I make a motion to approve, 15.
Second.
Second in discussion. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. 15 approved. Okay, as you know, we, we discussed the voting machine at the, at your executive session. And it appears that we're, that we need, as you can tell tonight, we, we need to get our voting system completed. I'd like to first, I'll make a motion to approve that. Second.
Second.
During discussion, I, I would just like to say that I particularly want to thank the gentleman at his, at his company that has offered to do the repairs at minimal cost and very little profit to his company. I thought it was very honorable of him to do that. And that he was going to live, live here, I think of him as John Burr. And, and his comments were appropriate and we certainly appreciate him and his willingness to do that. Is there any discussion, other than this discussion?
Mayor, I make a motion, this may delay. I'd like our tech guys to take a look at the system and what alternatives exist and compare the costs of that.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion to delay. I'd like to discuss that, Mr. Moore, if I could. How about if we worked an amended to where we could delay it and should the, our IT team determine that it is the lesser expensive route to take the proposal that's on the table, that we're to accept that proposal, that it bears?
Looking at it, we're still looking at in the future trying to build the new council chambers. If we're going, you know, it's a matter of spending $25,000 versus $17,000, but we buy a system that would fit and move into the new chambers of which we're building and it has all the latest technologies to it. I just have some concerns, you know, as much as I can gather to understand out of this thing, this thing is absurd. And you can buy a real hopped up server for $8,000 and, and the software is a blessing. And I just have some questions. And I think our tech guys need to report back to us as to what the alternatives are. I mean, we could, they, they gave it name vocally for a while. I don't see how I've done much to, I heard.
Do you want to motion delay for 30 days?
Yes, please.
And a motion for postpone delay for 30, postpone for 30 days, depending on the situation. Those in favor, postpone, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Roll call.
No.
I'll second that. Okay. What'd you say?
One, just called the voice of the IT guy to have a look at the system. My understanding is they have not seen it at all. I talked to Scott on that last one.
Can we give that information between the first and second reading?
It is, no. You could. Mr. Summers, would you allow the first reading to occur and then, and then let your IT people make the recommendations to be able to separate it? Okay, so you'll withdraw your, your motion? I don't think we'll all disagree, we don't disagree with you.
No.
Okay, you got to go leave it. Okay, so, so any other discussion before we vote? Did I argue about one? Motion to postpone for 30 days. Roll call, Madam Court.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Harrison?
No.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Redd?
Yes.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes.
Ms. McLaughlin?
No.
None, yes, and three of them.
Thank you. Postpone, please approve. Okay, I'm going to ask for a, I need, I'd like to discuss an approval for 418 bypass and I'd like to make a motion to approve, to approve, to consider Resolution 22 and then we'll make a motion to approve Resolution 22. So I make a motion to consider Resolution 22. Second, second. Is that any discussion? Those in favor, favor please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, now I make a motion to approve Resolution 22. Resolution 22. What has happened is we've received a contract from the state of Tennessee in reference to the widening of, of the bypass out there where the TEPCO project is coming, are, is proposed. And this contract requires the city to enter into a contractual agreement with T-DOT. I received this on September 23rd. There's been a few discussions, my part blocked from ABC, about, about this road. And so I wanted to bring it, bring it to you because I, I'm not interested, you can't sign a contract without your authorization. I want to bring you the details. It's a rather thick contract, but I think what it gets down to, oversimplification of it, is this. T-DOT has agreed to widen that area and right there where the proposed TEPCO project is coming. They're going to widen it to, to access a deceleration lane and acceleration lane for trucks to enter and exit the property that's in question. So T-DOT has agreed as a part of the incentive to bring the, the company to Clarksville, as do all other companies, they have money available for those projects. The, the funding is, is this way. The type of work, the new construction would be, the phase one funding, there are three parts of the base. The first part is $279,708. That's, that's 100% paid by T-DOT. The next part is $67,925, 50% to T-DOT, 50% from the city. The third part is $2,797,080, 100% paid by T-DOT. So of the proposal, there's $67,000 of which we're, we, we would be liable for one half of the $67,000. So out of a $3 million project, we would be, request according to these numbers approximately $36,000, $37,000. In addition to that, part of the discussion was that the property, so, so that's the property on, on highway, on the bypass. It's my understanding from discussions this, this time that there's, T-DOT believes there's plenty of right of way already in place. So if that be the case, we have zero exposure financially. And they believe there's plenty of right of way. This, in addition, T-DOT, and I think this is part, not in addition, it's part of, part of, T-DOT has agreed to build the road from, from the bypass back to the project. So you got the bypass here and it'd be a road going back. That, that property has been agreed upon by Matthews and Tucker to provide that property to T-DOT so that T-DOT could build the road. As a part of that agreement from us and T-DOT, T-DOT has agreed to allow the Matthews-Tucker group to deed that to the city or provide these, or right of way to the city, and then we would provide it to T-DOT. In so doing, we would be able to use the value of the property of that road against our 50% of the $67,000, if there is a $67,000. So this is, this is our understanding. I would request, based upon these numbers, it's, it's a pretty good situation for the city of Clarksville. And what I would suggest, that, that should you so desire to approve it, that we make it subject to those agreements, that, that the, the value of the road, if I, for any purchase price of the, of the cost, and that, that the cost be in the approximate numbers that I had just outlined to you. Okay, Ms. McLaughlin?
Mayor, since we're just finding out about this, and this is a resolution, which means that it passes on one reading, I would like to have another 30 days to look at this and to let the people that live over there have some notice that this is coming up. I know all, many of us have had phone calls from the residents or people that are concerned about TEPCO. We don't want to, we want to give them a little bit of notice about the, the widening of the road or the potential of it. That's my opinion.
I don't think there's ever been any question on the way to the road. That's always been part of the schedule.
This is the first I've heard of it.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Forrester?
Is, by any chance, is there a plan, part of the plan to widen the, you know, the road, the street on 418 bypass comes up to, it's two-way, it's two-lane up to about Appleton's Harley-Davidson and bridges into one lane. Is there any chance that that could be widened, two lanes all the way to 418?
Sir, I can't answer that. I, I can tell you that this only deals with that intratheater zone. And that's a T-DOT road. We don't have to do that on the T-DOT road. And with, you know, we'd love to request a red line at Evans Superior Road. We tried that many times, can't get it. And I'd be glad to request that, but good luck. Okay, Ms. Harrison?
Mayor, this is for information purposes only, but would that 33, 5, or 33, 6, 7, whatever it is, would that be in this year's budget or the next year's?
Um...
Or is there a timeline?
Knowing T-DOT, I would, I would guess that T-DOT would require us to set aside those funds. And, and the reason I'm bringing it to you tonight is that I would want to, not, I would not want this to, to mess our deal up because of a timing issue. This contract was submitted to us September 23rd. And as you all know, in addition to that, we sent a resolution to T-DOT back April of last year telling them that we want them to proceed further, this is the project that we want to do and we support it wholeheartedly. We passed that resolution. Okay, any other comments?
What's the timeline on the contract bonding trend?
Yes?
You said there was a timeline, wasn't there?
I don't know of the timeline. All I said was, I think, was that I'd like to make this subject to the, the agreements that I have outlined to you tonight, that, that our part of the funding is subject to us getting funding on that, getting approval of our part of that road being applied for our 50% of that small amount. And it's my understanding that, that, that the, most people think that this will not cost anything. But I'm not representing it that way. Mr. Harvey, if I spell out everything, I keep thinking you...
I think so.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, has the purpose of widening this road?
This, this property is, I would tell you that the zoning is in place. We're not involved, we are not involved in the zoning. This property has been, has been already zoned properly. The property has been on a contract to these, to these people, to TEPCO. These, and they're building a facility back there. They're going through the thing. This is allowing acceleration, deceleration lane at this location for trucks to enter and exit that property. The other thing I'd like to tell you is, according to this, to this information I got from T-DOT, I'll read this to you. The total average initial annual payroll increases approximately $1,976,000. The initial capital investment by this company is $25 million at this location. The plant will be served by approximately 50 trucks per day, hence the acceleration, deceleration lane for the trucks entering that property. So the T-DOT is trying to make it accessible so it will not impede the flow of traffic. The initial employment will be approximately 30 people a day, distribution activities expanding to 50 people to 50 employees. If it's anything other than, other than what I presented to you, I would bring it back to you.
Well, you know, I'm going to be in favor of this because I own more industry in this city. Could you give me an idea, because I have kind of forgot exactly, because he was talking about going through 418, exactly where that is?
It's, it's, as you pass by Queen's Bluff in the lower valley, in the lower part of that area only. And that's the only area that they're talking about, that, that, that they're talking, that area they're entering. There used to be a Kawasaki dealership there, I think, motorcycle, mid-south, right there. And it's right before you, it's that. Any other questions about, about this?
Salvation Army, please?
The Salvation Army? Okay. There's a motion on the floor for approval and a second. Those in favor of Resolution 22, as we, as is presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Just give it a review there. I gave you plenty of time. If it's different than, than what we've outlined for you, I'll bring it to you and bring it back. Okay. A couple things, I need to make, Council, every couple minutes. I need to tell you that what you have, what you have in front of you is a copy of a, of a class layout of a new marina. The marina is going to be dug out in the area that you see there. And then, you can see where it says Mayor Piper's property, right inside there. That dirt is going to come and, and backfill along the backside of Riverside Drive and we're going to be building a, the, the trail up there. I just want you to know, before we should make any decisions or have any decisions made on that, I own a piece of property there and I'm making a public disclosure, it is the Express Town property. I've owned it for five or six years and, and the, the back of this property will, will back up to some property that I own. And I, I fully intend on providing the, if the property line goes back into the area that needs to, that we need to even, I fully intend on providing, no, no cost to the city. But I want to make you aware that I own property, that, that is going, the back end of it by the river is going to be built up. I don't know the approved value or not, I just want to know I own property there. Okay? Yes, you calling for the question?
No.
Thank you.
Is there still only one access form for that thing called?
Right, yes, right now, Lou.
Just look, watch out for the long-term time.
We're working on something, on some property on this area. So I, I appreciate that you have any other on this. If you would contact, Mr. Duritz, he's our point of contact on this and make him aware of your, of your desire. We'll move on from the property issue there. And by the way, look at the court, the court is here. They, they've accelerated process from six months to four months and that's not hurt us.
So you think they're going to meet the timeline?
I think we're going to meet the timeline. I think everybody will point. Okay, let's see here. You may recall during the budget that there was something else that I, that we all talked about, and I specifically talked about, and that was the, the way that the mayor's pay is established. You all know that the mayor's pay was established several years ago by ordinance and, and the mayor's pay is, is an automatic increase and it's tied into the consumer, consumer pricing debt. During this last budget, budget cycle, it was an uncomfortable situation in that we were very tough, we all know we had a very tough budget year this year. And, and, and we, we cut the budgets in a lot of areas. We asked the city employees, our, said the city employees would like to be cared for on our, on our pay. It was untenable for me to, to ask the city employees to cut the pay knowing, knowing our, take reduction in the amount of increases, knowing that the mayor's pay was an automatic increase. And, and I just don't agree with that. If the city employees do not get pay raises that are commensurate with, with what they should, then the mayor shouldn't. And what I've provided for you is something for your review for the next 30 days. And I'm going to ask that you look at it, if you have any suggestions. I appreciate if you contact me or work together to try to come up with something. My proposal is in front of you, as you see in front of you, at the, because of the ordinance, and we can't change the mayor's pay at all during the term, just like yours, during the term of the mayor. So at the end of this term, the mayor's pay will go to, to $125,100. If we leave it, if we do not change it, and you have to change it prior to, prior to the next term for whomever becomes the mayor, the, the ending mayor's pay at the end of that four years will be $148,100. And if it's not changed any further, the, the two more terms, the mayor will be $175,200. And I don't agree with that. I, I just, I think the, if the city employees do not, if we are in a tough budget year and the city employees do not get pay raises, I don't think the mayor should get pay raises. Because he's the CEO, that's why it's got us in trouble in some, in our, in our other economy, other part of our economy. And I don't agree with that. I'd like you to consider this. The way we propose, the way I propose it to you is currently, that's what it has been like this. But in the next term, whomever your mayor is, their, their pay will be capped at what it would be at the end of this term, which would be 124.3. So at the end of the next term, instead of 148.1, it'd be 124.3. And my proposal is that you only, that that mayor only get a 4%, not a 4% per year like we're getting now, like I'm getting now, but only a total of 4% at the end of the term. And so instead of 175.2 at the end of the, the next term, it will still be at 129. And I'd like to ask you to strongly consider that and, and I'd like to ask that we hear the employees, the vote of confidence that we're, that we're looking at, at that, at that very closely. So please, please send that on the next, on the next speaker. Let me, just one more thing, we're going to be leaving from here and going over, over to City Hall to watch the debate.